I'd like to call the Winton Woods Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 22nd, to order. Will you please rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Miranda?
Present.
Mr. Penneka?
Present.
Mrs. Burns?
Present.
District honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President, I'm just very proud to have this honor. Our first Kiwanis Character is Key Award responsibility is awarded to Luke Wilson. Where's Mr. Wilson? Wow, Mr. Wilson, come on. I have to say some good stuff about you. You ready? All right, come right here.
Come over here, Luke, stand right next to me. Stand right here, look out at the camera here. Look out. Luke, we're gonna do something a little different. Get up here. There you go. All right, there you go. All right, how you feel? You excited? Okay, all right, I'm gonna read some things about you. All right. Nomination for Character Trait Submission. Students' name: Luke Wilson, Grade 2. Teacher's name: Ms. Rebecca Schmidt. And Character Trait Responsibility. Luke demonstrates responsibility in numerous ways. Every task and assignment I give him, he tackles head-on. He stays on track and works diligently, even when there are distractions in the classroom. Luke likes to be challenged and shows a desire to always want to learn more. He raises his hand in class even though he has a shy personality. When other students make bad choices, he leads by example and continues to make good choices. I think Luke is a great candidate for the character trait of responsibility. Wow. Sir.
Well, Luke, Jim Lawler's my name. I'm from the Winton Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club, and we have the Kiwanis Character is Key Award for you, and this is presented to Luke Wilson in special recognition of your outstanding character trait of responsibility. And that means following through, thinking before you act, doing a task to the best of your ability when you said you would do it, and being able to count on you and your word. So with this award, there's a gift certificate to Barnes &amp; Noble Bookstores for $35. And you can use it online. Barnes &amp; Noble is up at Union Center, and there's one over at Kenwood as well. So, all right.
Luke, hold on, don't, 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 don't. Tell me who you brought with you tonight. Point 'em out. Give some names.
Mom.
Mom.
Sam, Maya, and...
All right. All right, fantastic. All right. Congratulations.
Thanks for bringing those people here with you, Luke.
The next award, Student of the Month Award. I met this young lady last year, and I was so impressed with her, and now I get a chance to meet her again. I was excited because I thought she was a senior last year, but I'm happy that she was only a junior. And if you want to stay one more year, dear, we could do that for you. Okay, all right. Recommendation for Kendra Jackson, Gold Star Student of the Month. This was written by Mrs. Linda Lumpkin, her counselor. Kendra Jackson is currently on track to be the 2015 valedictorian at Winton Woods High School. Wow. She currently ranks first in her graduating class with a 4.325 grade point average. Extracurricular activities are important to Kendra. She is involved in track and field, women leading tomorrow, pep band, marching band, and key club. Kendra has also been inducted into the National Honor Society and has been given the Top Student Award her 10th grade year and her 11th grade year. Kendra Jackson is a very mature, responsible young lady who is active in planning her future. When speaking about Kendra, I have to note that she is very conscientious with developing and following a plan. As her school counselor, I've witnessed this. She is taking time to research career interests and prospective college and universities. Her career interests range from engineering to architecture. She has had the opportunity to participate in a Metropolitan Sewer District intern working in the engineering department. Kendra is interested in attending Hampton University, Tennessee State, the Ohio State University, Tulane, University of Tennessee at Knoxville. She didn't say Kentucky State, but I think it's on here somewhere. All right. It is certain that based on Kendra's ability to set goals and her value of education, she will be a success. All of us at Winton Woods High School are very proud of you, Kendra. Congratulations.
All right, now Kendra, Green Hills Forest Park has for you the Gold Star Kiwanis Student of the Month, and with this certificate, there is a gift certificate to Gold Star Chili.
Um, I'm glad to receive this award. It really helps to be acknowledged for all the hard work that I've put in, and hopefully I can finish this high school career out strong. Thank you. I brought my mom, my dad, and my grandparents.
Fantastic.
And today is my grandpa's birthday.
The next award is a special recognition award. How many of you have ever seen those beautiful flags around May that are on the fence of all the graduates? That's the first thing I recognized years ago when I would drive through Forest Park. And here's a true story. I got stopped by a police officer once as I was driving down, and I mentioned to him that I was just trying to count the flags for all of the graduates, and he said, "Drive carefully." So, I've tried to use that same thing around the city, but that doesn't work. All right. So, special recognition. Where's Ms. Betty Dunn? Oh, come on. Where is Ms. Elsie Kitchen?
She couldn't come tonight.
All right, Karen Kitchen?
She couldn't come either.
They're related?
Yes.
Okay, all right. What about Ms. Rogie Volmar? Ah, there she is.
This is a group to be reckoned with.
Oh, this, this group is absolutely outstanding. Now, there have been other people, I won't call the district's name, that have tried to emulate it, but it doesn't quite work out that way.
Not quite the same.
Not, it's not the same. So, the Board of Education extends its great appreciation to Ms. Dunn, Ms. Kitchen, Ms. Kitchen, and Ms. Volmar for tangling, tangibly honoring Winton Woods High School graduates every May. And a task that takes 15, wow, 15 hours to complete. These community members hang blue and green ribbons representing the students along the fence on Winton Road near the high school. The ribbons stay on the fence until graduation day, and then each graduate may take his or her ribbon down as a keepsake. That's huge. Thank you.
And we've had contributors who have given to us for the 22 years we've been doing it. And I think that says more about the community than all of us tying ribbons for us months. So, I just have to turn around and say thank you. Thank you to the high school. They provide us with so much background work, we could never pull it off without the staff at the high school. They do such a remarkable job. So, I'm grateful to the community, and I'm grateful that the graduates have done so well. And this year was a banner year. It's the first year in the times we've been keeping score or adding up that we reached 10.3 million in scholarships. That's double digits. It's wonderful. It's very good.
Well, Ms. Volmar, don't leave. There's another award for you. It's the Community Spirit Award. This is presented to an individual and organization to recognize their significant contributions to Winton Woods, and so we wanted to honor and recognize you again for all of your hard work and dedication and commitment to the district. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Yes. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. My family has three of those hanging on our house. So, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Can I give you seven? Great, thank you.
Madam President, this next award is not on the agenda, but I'd like to kind of squeeze it in if I could.
Yes, sir.
How many of you remember Jermaine Hill from last month, receiving the great award? Well, Mr. Hill has received another award outside of our region, but it's the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of State Fire Marshal Awards. And Mr. Hill has been just graciously awarded the Fire Prevention Educator of the Year Award. So, congratulations to Mr. Hill. I'm sure he's out there doing his work. Mr. Cleary, I wonder how do you get the Fire Prevention Educator of the Year Award? What do you think you have to do for that?
I don't know.
All right.
I just know every October is Fire Prevention Month.
Okay.
And he's usually in our schools, working with our students. I can remember one year at Primary South where they filled the building with smoke, a fog, and the kids had to, they could actually see what it was like when the, when the building was full of fake smoke, and they had to learn how to crawl out of the building. So, it was very interactive, and I'm sure it had a big impact on our students.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Next piece?
Yes, please.
Foreign exchange students and international students. I've been working on these names all morning, so I will just do the first part of the name because I think I have it right. So, from Bosnia? I see you. All right. Nadina?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
That's all right. Nadina and I met last week, and we had a very interesting conversation, and she is so proud of her English. She just doesn't realize how well she speaks, and so every time you mention how great her English is, she smiles. And our host family is Mr. and Mrs. Paul Dinning. Thank you very, very much. All right. From China, Bowen, Tim. And the host family is Mr. and Mrs. Kevin Fujikawa. Are they here? Okay. From Germany, Marina, and the host family is Ms. Kelly White.
She's over there.
Thank you. And from Germany, Lucas. Lucas, I just knew it was you. I could tell by the Hard Rock shirt. All right. And Mr. and Mrs. John Kiefer, host family, thank you very much for hosting. And from Italy?
Yeah.
Okay. Francesca?
Yeah.
I got it right. All right. And Mr. and Mrs. Steve Wilkie, thank you very much for hosting. Welcome. I hope that your educational journeys are going to be something that just strengthens our district and makes you a better student as well. So, thank you very much. There are medals. So, we're gonna give you these great medals.
And a group photo.
And a group photo. Could you come up? So?
So, what I would do is service the parents must be worried to do.
But also thankful for the opportunity.
I'm sorry.
And I'm sure they're also thankful for the opportunity.
I can't imagine doing it on the side.
Okay, I'm over here, so look this way. One, two, three, one more. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the school district.
And we'd like to really extend a thank you to the host families. Without your service, this would be extremely difficult, if not completely impossible. So, we really appreciate the things that you do to make this a possibility. Thank you. Mr. Smith, have you concluded?
I have concluded, Madam President.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll take a five-minute recess. For those of you who would like to go home and do some homework and get that out of the way, we'll give you an opportunity to do that. We will resume the meeting with public comments. I have two. Mr. John Willard?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Point is no chain. My comments tonight are hopefully fairly short. We do have our report card out, and it's not unexpected what we got. I think we are all hoping and praying that this is the year we bottomed out, and with the new administration and the new teachers, and hopefully new instructors will start going up going forward. But I do want to make some comments that do concern me, particularly the progress. By you added. We continue to do, do fairly well as far as those with disabilities and challenged. We've got to be, I mean, what seriously concerns me is we only got a C as far as gifted children. And that's very unfortunate. Because wouldn't it be nice if we had at least one Merit Scholar a year just south of us? Fintetown had three. Northwest had one. And I don't want to compare Winton Woods with Xavier, Urseline, or Walnut Hills. That wouldn't be fair. But I think we have the capacity to produce one or more Merit Scholars because I think we have kids with the brains there. And I just disappointed that we're not doing better on that. I notice also that we continue to do very badly almost for five years in a row now on fourth grade, fifth grade, and seventh grade math. Those continue to be the Achilles' heel. I've mentioned it previously, it was, what, two years ago? That was a serious problem, and it still is. And it's, the pipeline is broken there. Unless we get it repaired, we're not going to help either in the science or otherwise as we go forward. As far as the gifted children, I'll refer you to Section 3324.01 of the Ohio Revised Code. The Ohio Revised Code does mandate that just like children with disabilities have to be treated with a special care, so do gifted children. And there's a good reason for that. It's the top 10% that make jobs for the rest of us, that drive our economy. Those of you who've been in any large corporations, I understand there may be one or two here from Dr. Campbell. I think all of you know that the heart of any corporation is not the accounting department, not necessarily the marketing department, or not the guy sitting in a penthouse making 10 million a year. What keeps your corporation going is your research and development. That's where your brains are, and that's where you need to keep replenishing and replenishing that, that labor pool. I do know, under the Rising Code, that schools are supposed to report on how it's dealing with this gifted students. And that's Section 3324.05. And I'm making a request now, I don't need it in two seconds, of what the last two reports were that we got, that we sent forward. Because this is a very critical area, and it's also under that Section 3324.05D. If you don't do a good job, the Department of Education reduce, can reduce funds forwarded to your school system. It has the authority under that section. If you're not doing your job, you lose money. So, I would kind of like that looked at, and again, I don't see any reason why we can't do it, and don't tell me the students here, we don't have enough with brains here to do it, or there's minority problems. I mean, I don't want to hear that again because George Washington Carver was a minority, and his brain provided more jobs for more people than almost anybody else in the 18th, 19th, and early 20th century. And there's this guy called Bill Gates. He was another nerd. He has provided jobs for millions of people. So, I think it's something we've got to look at, and if we don't, I think it's, we're not doing our jobs. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Comment from Joseph Mast?
My name's Joe Mast. I live in Green Hills, 45 Hayden Drive. I graduated from Winton Woods High School in class of 1993, and I've been in and out of the school district since then. I have two children involved in this school district. One is in first grade, one is in pre-K. And I am a small business owner, a small technology business owner, and I was trying to find ways to become more involved in the school district. I noticed on the school calendar coming up in February that there is a STEM conference, but I couldn't find any other information pertaining to it. I have spoke since this, since I came into this meeting with Dr. Holden, and she and I are going to get together to get a little bit more information. But one of the things is that I've noticed it's not very well-publicized. There's not much information out there. What information there is regarding the conference, how to get involved in the conference on the district website seems to be lacking. If there's any way that we can get some of this information out so that way more small business owners, more technology people can get involved in this conference, bring more value to the, to the children who are going to be attending the conference, to the young adults, I'm just trying to get more information, trying to bring it to the board's attention that more needs to be published about this so that way more people can become involved. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I know we'll definitely take you up on volunteering to, to be involved with it. I've been able to attend it every time we put the program on, and it's, it's a really exciting venue for our students. We've really been lucky in that the business community has been very, very, very engaged. It's kind of surprising how many engineering, technology firms there are in all three communities. I'm always surprised because I learn of usually two or three new ones that I didn't, that I wasn't aware that we had. So, I look forward to seeing, yes, I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you for having me back up for a second. I, I don't even know, but some of the things I'd like to find out, just to throw out real fast one more second, is where it is, the hours, the grades that are going to be involved, what topics are going to be covered. These things, like I say, I do IT work. I do everything in the IT industry through my company, and I'm looking for ways to become more involved, but without even having a, I realize this is planned in late February, but still without even any kind of an idea of what's coming, it's kind of hard for me to try and get there, so, all right?
We'll make sure you get connected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Having no other comments, we can move to 5.01 to approve the minutes as presented.
Madam President, I move and approve the administrative files that are attached in our board document for approval for date 8/21, 8/25, and 9/8.
Hearing a motion, is there a second? Second. Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
6.01, Treasurers Reports.
We've disclosed a month of August. Year-to-date revenues for the general fund were, are year-to-date 13 and a half million, of which 1.7 million was for the month of August, and that represents mostly just payments from the state. And our operating expenditure is year-to-date of 6.3 million, and they're slightly under, under projection for only two months, but it's still hard to tell where it will end. But we'll keep posting you up, keeping you up to date where we are within our budget. And we spent 6.3 million, as I said, year-to-date. And in all funds, we closed the month of August with 16.7, of which 15.9 million was the general fund. Also, I'll just go ahead with the investments. Our investment interest was up $1,000. We were up $2,603 and some cents for the month of August. I promise you, I keep investigating other ways, and I have two companies coming in within the next month to try and help us set up some type of a portfolio. We have to be a little bit proactive because we all know that the bond issue is going to pass. We will have major influx of funds, and I need to figure out what to do with those funds until they're needed for construction. So, we need to get a process to handle those funds when they do become available. So, with that, I give you an update on the investments also, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Uh-huh.
Is there a motion for acceptance?
I move to acknowledge and to approve the investments for the month of August.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
8.01, Reports of the Superintendent.
Madam President, each school has provided a list of events and activities that will be taking place in the school. I caution us not to just attend the big events like the sporting events, but there are some strong academic events that take shape as well. And I'm excited, the superintendent's art gallery is back on again. I think I am now a connoisseur of great art, so I can pick a part a mile away. So, here are the upcoming school events for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Can you say a little bit about preparation possibly for the fall OAA? I know that that's coming up. Is there anything that, that parents can do, or how, how best to prepare for that?
Well, we're gonna actually have a, there's an evening, academic evening coming up soon, yes.
Tomorrow?
Yes. That's soon. Thank you, Dr. Holden. Where we wanted to do something a little different. We wanted to not just talk about the activities and leave all the responsibility on the school, but we wanted to show parents how they can get involved and get engaged way before the opportunity takes place. The other thing to keep in mind, we're just past the midterm mark, and so midterm reports will be going out. But these midterm reports are really indicators to help parents understand that your child is doing very, very well, keep up the good work, or your child is having some difficulties, and we need to get some, some support in there so that they can have some success with the last 10 weeks. One of the things that I did notice, even though Mr. Cleary pointed out it's in the school calendar, principal of Primary North has been very deliberate that says in her report that that, when the report cards go home. I think that might be a standard way. When we're looking at these reports, we usually are looking at something that just stands out, and that might just be one of our systematic pieces to say that we should probably do this across the board because that report is very important. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. 8.02, State Report Card Report.
Mr. Dinning.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate the opportunity to present this this evening and look forward to discussing it with you. We have a PowerPoint presentation on this, and so I'll walk through that. Certainly, we'll have a session where you can ask questions at the Certainly, we'll have a session where you can ask questions at the end. But if other questions move you, please feel free to ask as we go through. So there's a brief, and we did this last year, and I believe all of us were present for that. So I'll go somewhat quickly through this, but I thought it's good just to review how the new report card is assembled because it still is new. It's in its second year now. And there's a lot of changes every year. Things are being added. Sometimes there's pilot data introduced. Sometimes there's a grade for the first time. Sometimes there's something just being reported for the first time. So the report card in Ohio now is made up of of six, what the state calls components. And they are pictured on this slide. Achievement, progress, gap closing. All of those are based on one single test. So either the OAA in grades three through eight or the OGT in grade ten and eleven for achievement and grade, well, not only three through eight for progress, so only the OAA for progress. Gap closing is an analysis of three through eight and and tenth grade. So sort of the right side of that diagram is testing. OAA or OGT on the left side is something else. Grad rate, we're familiar with that, and we'll talk about that. K-three literacy is new this year. And I'll explain that in more detail when we get to it. But that is a new experience for the entire state to have an accountability measure at the primary level, which starts in kindergarten. So last year, there were there were nine measures that we could see. The state has informed us that there will be up to sixteen this year. It appears right now that there may be ten. So we'll see how this proceeds. They've indicated some things are report and some things are not. And so you don't get a grade if it's just reported. The Prepared for Success, which is some of the college readiness metrics and career readiness metrics, are not being graded yet, but we'll see if they're reported or not. I haven't been able to see them yet, so I don't know. This is August of fourteen. Again, the new graded measure is K-three literacy, which has to do a lot with the third grade guarantee and making sure students are are ready to not just learn to read, but read to learn by third grade. That's the shift that happens at that grade level. These are the new reported measures that are coming. Most of them are tied to what I just mentioned, which is the Prepared for Success metric or component. College admissions tests, that's ACT, SAT, dual enrollment, industry credentials for students in vocational programs, the number of honors diplomas, number of advanced placement courses, and IB if you have it. Again, I've not seen any of this yet. It's not in the state secure data center, so we can't can't see it yet. But we're told it's coming and it's going to be reported this year. So that remains to be seen. Next year, there are more things coming. There's no new graded measures next year, although this new reported measure is going to be the college career ready assessment, which again, I think that Prepared for Success piece. And then in 2015, all of the components received grades. We just found out today, and I believe Dr. Holden can correct me. It's 2016 for the overall grade now? The overall, overall, overall?
I love today, September twenty-second.
Right. That's that's the latest. It's it is an ever-evolving landscape now. Next slide. So in 2016, there's a value-added component for the high school that we don't know much about at all yet. But that is supposedly coming as a graded measure that will be incorporated into the component grades for the lower grades, which were based on PARC. So this is what the new report card looks like. We've seen it. But those boxes are the component grades. And then up in the upper right-hand corner is the the overall grade that is not coming in 15. We believe it's in 16 now. So the first component is achievement. It's probably the most familiar. And it's comprised of two sub-measures, which is performance index and performance indicators, which is a measurement of how all students do. And then performance indicators is how many kids passed at a given grade level in subject. And this is the grade specified actually in law. It's not an ODE thing. This is actually in the legislation that it's pretty standard what we would think of as a ten-point grading scale. The only catch is when you see the the grades on the next page, it's divided by a hundred and twenty, not a hundred. That's divided by a hundred because it's a percentage. But the next one is divided by a hundred and twenty to get the percentage. So again, performance index is a certain number of points for every student that takes a test. So it does measure performance of all students, not just performance of a group that passes. Again, based on third through eighth and tenth grade students, eleventh grade, students that didn't pass in tenth do take OGT, but it doesn't count in this particular calculation. These are the grades for this year as reported in the in the state secure data center. So high school, grade of C, middle school, grade of C, intermediate school, grade of D, elementary school, grade of C, and the district grade of C. It's important to note that we have two other schools not mentioned here, but they are represented by the elementary schools' grades. So the feeder schools get the same grade as the school that they feed. This is a historical perspective, just looking at performance index trends going back to 2010 for the ES, ISMS high school. And then the last stack of bars to the far right is our district. You can see a couple trends there with a couple schools. And then the district in and of itself has remained relatively flat over that five-year time span. This is PI for the district, just a little more detail. And it goes back to 2007, so it's a slightly different look. And again, it's been fairly flat since 2007. Had an upward trend for about four years, and then we went down, back up, and then down this past school year. Indicators is the other piece of the achievement metric. And it again is is defined by what we would consider to be a slightly modified ten-point scale. The A looks right, the B looks right, and the C looks familiar. But you'll notice the D range goes all the way down to fifty. And that is, again, in law. That's that's not an ODE decision or a district decision. It's also, if you notice the subtext above the title, this is with the new eighty percent proficiency standard. So the state used to allow you to get credit for an indicator if seventy-five percent of the children in that grade level and that subject area passed. Now the bar has been raised. It's an additional five percent higher. So districts around the state are seeing a decline in the number of indicators that they're able to earn. And it'll take some retooling and rethinking to try to again, stretch to meet those those higher standards. These are the indicator grades at the eighty percent pass rate level. High school picks up six, and then you can see the other numbers listed there for a district total of seven at this time. And those are the resulting grades according to the grading scale we just saw. These are achievement results over time by grade level. Reading is on the left and math is on the right. And you can see the trend in grade three. And the blue is the current year, and it goes back to 2007. So the bar to the far left is 2007. Fourth grade, some some mixed results, but down relatively speaking this past school year. Science, we aren't sure what's going on there. We've been going the right direction, and that's a good thing. But it's been it's been very different. We think a lot of it is is test-sensitive. And so that's a curriculum piece and an instruction piece that we want to align. And you can see the trends in fifth grade in reading and in math. And this is probably the number one support focus for our district this year's fifth grade, both subjects, reading and math, for reasons that you can see illustrated there. Sixth grade achievement, very different than fifth grade. Numbers are similar to fourth grade in terms of pass rate. And you can see the trend over the last eight years. Seventh grade, reading on the left, math on the right. This is eighth grade achievement. Eighth grade is a is a bright spot at this point in the district. That's the highest pass rate outside the high school in reading in eighth grade. So certainly something to study and peel back and and talk to teachers about to figure out what what they feel is really going well there. Math is on the right trajectory, and science has been, again, somewhat intermittent, but on an upward trend over the last three years. This is the high school now, tenth grade OGT. This graph is interesting because you can see the relative strength of each subject area. And they almost go, not intentionally at all, they almost go left to right in terms of of relative strength. Writing has historically been a strength of the high school, followed by reading. Math and social studies, close. And then science is, again, the the piece we really need to focus in on for our kids. So that's tenth grade. Actually, could you go back one, Dr. Holden? This is interesting to look at, too. You can see the number of times in tenth grade we were above eighty percent over the last eight years. And that's the target now to to earn an indicator. So you kind of look and see, and those numbers are hard to see at some points. But that gives you a historical trend of of how often we were above that eighty percent mark. Eleventh grade, the criteria for earning an indicator at grade eleven is actually eighty-five percent of the total number of students involved. And you can see the percentages nearing ninety or above ninety, except for science. So that concludes the first piece. This is gap closing is the next one. This this data is looking at every possible demographic subgroup that could could be in your district or school, so long as there are thirty or more of the particular demographic group you're talking about. If it's less than thirty, ODE does not report it, and it's not graded or measured. This is the gap closing grade. This metric is pretty complicated and sort of hard to explain. I'll do my best on it and without going into tremendous detail and put you to sleep. But the the basic idea behind gap closing and the way the state calculates it is how much of the gap do you relatively close against the standard? So we'll take a look at the standards. I believe it's the next slide. Well, these are the groups. I apologize. We'll look at the standards in one moment. These are the the groups defined in federal legislation. And they're very reminiscent of No Child Left Behind. In fact, it's the same groups. And our district does have all of those groups. All students is considered a group. And then we have thirty or more of all of those different demographic subgroups in our in our school system. The targets, I believe, should be the next slide. Yeah, these are the targets. So these replaced AYP, if you remember that, adequate yearly progress that the the federal government put into place with the No Child Left Behind law. So in 2013, 2014, this past school year, the reading target was any student in any group or the all-students group, any group that you would look at should have a a pass rate of eighty-four point nine percent or higher. If you do that, they don't concern themselves with gap. Math was eighty point five, so a little lower. And the federal government approved this, which granted Ohio the waiver, the No Child Left Behind waiver. If, however, you did not reach this target, they look at where your pass rate is, and then they go back to the year before, and they see where you were the year before. And then they look at how much of the gap you closed between where you were, where you were this past year, and what the standard is. And you pro-rata get credit for it. So if you were at a forty-four point nine in reading in, say, eighth grade, for example, and you closed half the distance to that eighty-four point nine, you would get a grade of fifty percent, which would be an F. So that's how the metric works. If you closed seventy percent of the distance, you'd get a C in that group for that that particular metric. So go ahead and go to the next. They also look at graduation. They look at attendance, and they look at participation. And these are targets. That's a state-set target of seventy-five point nine percent graduation, so you have to to hit that. If you hit that, they don't calculate gap closing. Again, if you meet the target, there's no there's no gap closing calculation. There's a safe harbor clause in this that for some schools that are below that graduation rate, if you improve two full percentage points a year, you you get a safe harbor so that they consider you meeting the standard there, too. You have, sir? Safe harbor in in grad rate is is only this. Was there another particular angle? Oh, oh, safe harbor is kind of a temporary reprieve. So if you, he was saying, just explain the idea of safe harbor. So if if a high school are at seventy-three percent graduation rate, and they didn't make that, but they improved to seventy-five within one year, it would grant them an exception from the gap closing calculation. So the attendance is ninety-three and participation is ninety-five, meaning you've got to have kids coming to school at a rate of of ninety-three times out of a hundred. And you have to have a participation rate of ninety-five percent or higher on all of the tests, which our district is historically always very close to one hundred on participation. This is the catch on gap closing that you you may notice there are no metrics in there in the report card about attendance. It used to be an indicator. It's not anymore. Graduation rate used to be its indicator. So graduation rate became its own thing, and it's a measured graded thing. There's a four-year and a five-year, so you get two grades out of it. Attendance became something that impacts gap closing. So if you don't make your gap closing grade, they basically take away one letter grade. If you don't have ninety-three percent of any subgroup attend school the way that they're supposed to at the ninety-three percent rate as defined by the state, that's the last bullet. There's a ten percent penalty for that group and then for the the entire school or district overall. So here's our attendance rate. We talked a little bit about that, going back to 2007. Relative increase from ninety-four, two years ago, to nine, almost ninety-five, ninety-four point six this past year. So that's a bright spot. These are the gap closing grades. And unlike last year, there was only, we had, I think, middle school had one or two groups that required a demotion. That is, the the attendance rate wasn't high enough. We actually have a few at the high school. So that is certainly part of the strategy of having an additional resource and a truancy officer to assist with some of that. And the importance of being in school to do your absolute best and achieve your potential. So that's gap closing. Progress is the next one. This is otherwise known as value-added. And there are different subgroups, each of which receives a grade. So gifted students are looked at, students in the lowest twenty percent in the state. So that's not in our district. That's statewide. They line all the kids up from lowest to highest in terms of performance and growth, in this case. And then they take a slice of the one-fifth at the lowest, and they measure how are those students doing in your school system? And the last group they look at is is students that that have a disability. So value-added is a measure that reflects a school's effect on individual students or groups of students from year to year. So it it is a point-to-point calculation, and it compares a student's performance against him or herself as compared to the whole state. It's kind of like holding your place in line. If you were fifty-first in line in year one, and in year two, you were fifty-second in line, they would consider you to basically hold your position. That's a yellow or a met value-added result. So for a year's worth of instruction, you demonstrate a year's worth of growth. So that's sort of how the whole system is based. It is founded in or calculated from grades four through eight. And it's based entirely on the spring OAA until 2016, and when there when there's a high school portion that comes in. This is the grading scale for value-added or for progress. It's standard error of the mean. So if you're more than, or it's mean gain index, excuse me, which is the standard error of the mean divided by I forget what it is now. I can see the formula in my head. Standard error of the mean divided by the square root of the number of the kids involved in the set. Anyway, if you're two mean gains above, that's an A. If you're between one and two mean gain index points, it's a B. Between minus one and one is a C. And then you can see that minus minus two or less is an F. The thing about value-added that throws people is zero is actually okay. A zero is is you met. And then minuses are bad and pluses are good. So these are the district's value-added grades at each school that's measured. And again, north and south are not measured. And then the overall grade. It's important to note that the overall grade per ODE is a three-year average, whereas the other three are either a one-year or a two-year. And I've not yet received definitive information on that, whether it's a one-year average or, excuse me, just a single year, meaning last year. That's what it was last year. It was simply the year before. It may be a two-year average now. I've not been able to find that out. I'd be certainly happy to share that with you if I can find that out. But the overall grade is a three-year average. So the the middle school is is doing some things well. And we have some schools that we're still working on in terms of growth demonstrated from year to year. This is going back, oh, I'm sorry. Can you back up one, Dr. Holden? Thank you. So, and one more. So that's fourteen. This is thirteen. If you go forward one. Okay, that's what changed. I'm sorry. So similar, and again, on the overall, they're they're going to be similar. It's harder to move them in a single year because they are a three-year average. In 2012, these were the, they weren't grades. They were mean gain values, where they had a yellow, red, green system. And what the grade would have been had the grades existed that year. So graduation rate. Again, there are two calculations, a four-year and a five-year. Again, there are two calculations, a four-year and a five-year. This is the grading scale. It's not anything we would recognize at all, except for maybe the A, depending on where you grew up. You might have had a seven-point grading scale for an A. But it's highly modified after that, and again, it's in law, it's not a district decision. So I think there was four-year, and then this is five-year. Can you back up one, Dr. Holden? There is some difference, if you notice, in the two grading scales. That's four-year, and then they do measure the number of students you're able to successfully matriculate through in a five-year program of studies. Okay. And the next one should be our grades for last school year. So certainly above the gap closing target, but, and close to a C, but not quite into the C range for four-year or five-year. These are the graduation rates across the state by different type of school system in 2013. I couldn't retrieve this data for last year, but just for comparison's sake, these are where some of the, so we had a grade of D, and so we fall in the blue slice, both for the traditional building and the traditional school district picture. And in community schools are shown, or charter schools, as they're sometimes called, are shown on the far right. This is four-year graduation rate in 13. This is the urban eight districts. And again, Witten Woods would not actually be in this calculation. This is just the large, the largest school systems in our state. Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, Dayton, Toledo, Akron, and so forth. So I'm still looking for a composite of this from last year. I'd like to see if there's any change, if there's been improvement at all. This is our four-year grad rate in our district, going back to 2007. And the methodology changed, so the blue bars this past year, the methodology changed two years ago. So it looks like there's a big drop from 90.9 to 83.8 in one single year. That is when the state recalculated the way in which it was calculated, the cohort graduation method, which is a lot more complex and includes anyone who starts as a freshman. It doesn't matter whether you have a disability and your IEP entitles you to go extra time or not. And that's part of the difference you see in that particular drop from one bar to the next. We'll talk more about that in just a moment. This is five-year. So 87, two years ago, and 84, actually, three years ago, because this one runs two years in arrears, because it's a five-year calculation. So 84.8. And again, this is just some background information. This went into effect because ODE, or excuse me, USDOE, the Department of Ed at the federal level, is having a lot of trouble understanding which states are doing a better job, or what was going on in different states. So they actually changed, worked with a lot of states to completely change it. So a lot of states across the country have gone to this four-year, five-year, which allows you to step back and actually compare states in a more apples-to-apples type scenario. Again, the last bullet there is IDEA, or the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, allows students with disabilities to attend high school until age 22, if the IEP team determines that's the most appropriate thing for that particular student. And those students are no longer exempt in the calculation. So this is just the impact of that particular methodology in our system. And there's actual numbers there, and then there's percentages, and then there's the grade. So all is including everyone, which is the grades we just saw. And if we go back to the way it used to be calculated, where the students that are allowed to continue on until the age of 22, or what we call grade 23, so if you see that notation, it's just an internal district explanation, or, you know, modifier, so we can track that group of students and how they're doing. So you can see that, for example, in 2012, 223 out of 278 students graduated. Well, the part of the students that didn't graduate, you can see that denominator change down to 263. That's if those 15 students that had an IEP that had a right to continue on and their education didn't count against the district, the way it used to be, in other words, that the grade would basically go up a letter grade. So you kind of see that happening across the board. There's enough students in that situation who absolutely have the right, and we will never compromise on that, because that's the best thing for those children, their families and those students and that, and the teams of teachers and professionals that work with those. Those students feel that's in their best interest, so they're entitled to go on.
In addition to that, Board, I would really like for you to just pay close attention. You're not in my executive team meetings, but in those executive team meetings, the adults are making very, very sound decisions about furthering that educational opportunity for students. Some districts are saying it's going to hurt our report card. We will not compromise on that, because if students need additional time, then we're required to do that to make sure that they can be productive citizens, and I think we have a responsibility. And it's not just about the report card, it's about the ethical behavior that we have to watch at all times. So just a point of order.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Smith. So that's graduation rate, and we move on to the final metric that's being graded or assessed at this time, and that's K3 literacy. And I'll do my best to explain this one, too. This one actually looks at, and I'll try to keep it in real time. So in kindergarten, students are given, actually, in every grade K to 3, students are given an assessment. It's tied to third-grade guarantee legislation, so by September 30th, you have to assess where the students are. And according to the metrics on those tests, which are approved by ODE to be used or not used, they're either on track or not on track. If they're not on track, you develop something called a RIMP, or Reading Improvement Monitoring Plan, that is, a specific targeted document that's aimed at that particular child. And any child that doesn't have the on-track status will get one of those documents, and the teaching team teaches to that. So in kindergarten, for example, if you determine a student is not on track, the K3 literacy grade examines each of the students not on track in the first grade, or grade one, let's say, grade X. And then in grade X plus one, the next grade, they look to see if they changed from off-track or not on track to on-track. And then they measure that. And that's actually where the metric comes from. So it looks at the number of students not on track in one grade level, so two years ago, and then the number of those students that were changed to on-track in the following year. So it's all about trying to have students, again, reading at grade level. Two years of data, I think we touched on a lot of this. So in grade three, you actually get an inside-the-same-year calculation. Grade K1 and 2 are from grade to grade, so it's across two years. Grade three is a little different. It's actually within the same year. And there is a penalty for identifying a student who didn't receive a RIMP. So if they didn't get a Reading Improvement Monitoring Plan, that actually penalizes the district. So every student that's not on track has to have one. And ODE determined that the minimum grade of C would be whatever the state average was, and then they graduated it from there. So interestingly enough, the data we're about to look at, I actually have to hand you an update on, because it just came out this afternoon. This is sort of the nature of this nowadays. Also, any school district, the last bullet is important as you look around at possibly other districts. So there's 22 districts in Hamilton County, there's 49 districts in the four-county region around us. Some of them won't receive a K3 literacy grade, and you don't get a grade if 95% or more of your kindergarten students read at or above grade level. I believe that's what it is. Right. So if 95%, if 19 out of 20 of your kindergartners are on track, this grade will become non-reported for that district. So here's the, now, what I know to be wrong, K3 literacy grade data. I honestly just found out about 6:15 tonight. I'd gone in a couple times today to check it, and it wasn't there, but I went in at 6:15 and it was. So I'll go ahead and hand you the update. But basically, what it says is the grade is now coming soon.
That's what it says.
It really does. So I thought I'd give you a handout, and I'll update this, but I'll probably wait until they revise it. And you'll also see in the disclaimer there that the state is basically saying, "A lot of districts reported errors." And I actually saw one, and you can kind of see it here, too. You see the 54.7 grade of C? I thought that was a little odd, that that's not normally a C. But they also said that the mean would be the C, and they would go from there to assign the grade. So if, basically, because several districts across the state, and there are 609 districts, I don't know how many are reporting problems, but enough reported problems to cause it to be recalculated. And so now, these grades are not correct. I suspect the percentages and the numbers are close to right, but they are not correct for the grade. The other interesting bit of trivia about this particular component grade is that we weren't supposed to get the grade this year. We thought it was just going to be reported this year, and the grade would come next year, but it appears the grade is coming now. So we'll stay tuned, we'll find out. So what you're looking at in this table is just each of the schools that are measured, and those are our schools that have students in grades K to 3, so the two primary buildings, as well as the 3, 4, third and fourth grade elementary school. And the number of students on track in the prior grade for the two primaries, and then how many were on track of those students the next year. So certainly a situation we'd like to improve, and our efforts are definitely targeted around that. And we do a lot of improvement programs, a lot of reading improvement programs and reading tutoring and intervention at K3, and we'll continue to work on that. ES, again, is within the same year. So that's not on track by September 30th, but then on track on the spring OEA. So of the 172 students not on track in grade three, 94 of them were on track by the time the spring OEA came in. This does not include students that passed an alternate assessment, or students that passed in the summer, which we had several of those. Prepare for Success is, again, I don't have a lot of information on this, I can't find it, but it includes those various pieces. In our school system, we do not have IB, International Backgloria, but we do have quite a few advanced placement courses. Honors diploma is as it's defined by the state of Ohio. So it's not available yet. We were told it was going to be reported this year. I can't find the data yet, but supposedly graded next year. Might be delayed a year. We'll see how it goes. This is a summary, and again, I would caution you that the three grades in the K3 literacy range are incorrect, that we would probably just go ahead and put, you know, an X or a star there, because it's waiting to be redetermined. So I'm curious if you have questions, or what questions you might have, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you at this time.
Mr. Denny, you used an acronym, RIMP. Is that Reading Improvement?
Monitoring Plan, yeah. RIMP, R-I-M-P. And we love acronyms in education almost as much as the military, I'm afraid.
Monitoring.
Yeah, Reading Improvement Monitoring Plan. It's a construct of the third-grade guarantee.
And that's already in place at our schools?
Yes, ma'am, has been for two years. This will be our third year implementing those.
Okay. And what months are they tested with that RIMP?
Well, it's really more about the teaching piece.
Oh, okay.
So you're assessed by September 30th, like, there's, we used the Crawl Score last year, kindergarten readiness and literacy assessment. That's gone now. There's a new one called the KRA for this year. So we don't know a whole lot about it yet. We're still kind of understanding and interpreting what it means and what kind of information it passes to us. But students in kindergarten would take the KRA September 30th. We're going to use DIBELS. Okay, so we're familiar with DIBELS, Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy. So that's basically a fluency assessment, but there is a comprehension piece tied to it also. So students would take DIBELS in kindergarten, and then again, in first grade, DIBELS, and number of students determined to be not on track in kindergarten, all of those students would be assigned a RIMP. All of the students in first grade determined to not be on track are assigned a RIMP. All the students in second and third. So any student not on track in any grade level, K to 3, receives one of those. And it really, it's a very comprehensive plan. It's very in-depth, and it goes into what specific strategies are in place, and what does the intervention look like, what's the regular content instruction look like, how much is guided reading, how much is on-grade level, how much is off-grade level. It's pretty comprehensive. It's a good document.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All the way back to slide five, I'm talking about college readiness. Do you have any indication that the state is going to try to use the Ohio Regents, the Board of Regents report?
Haven't heard that yet.
So, good. It's so late coming.
Right.
But, so you don't know yet what sort of measure?
No, we're hearing ACT, but I think this is part of what slowed it down, is there are 3,000 schools in Ohio, and I think they're trying to find the right metrics to measure what they're after.
In the beginning, Mr. Pennington, the state wanted to use the ACT as an indicator of exiting from high school, but they couldn't do it, because if a student says, "I'm going to go and study and be a pharmacist," what's your ACT score? You may have to get a 26. If a student says, "I'm going to be a barber," what exit score would you need? You may need a 13. So they couldn't do it. They kept trying to use the measuring stick with the ACT, but it's virtually impossible to do, based on the student's pathways.
So kind of to that point, since the class of 17 will be the last ones to have taken the OGT, so.
Maybe, Madam President.
Maybe? Oh. And so that was going to beg the question, what's next?
So a series of, and of course, exams is next for the high school. We understand there are 12 of them, but a student would not take all 12. Student would, depends on the sequence of courses you take, particularly in mathematics where it's sequential. So there's an Algebra I, Geometry, no, Algebra I and Geo.
Algebra I, Geometry, English, English I, English II, Physical Science, American History, and American Development.
So there's eight. Okay.
It's a table of base significant differences.
So it has changed a lot. It used to be 12, and I think it was even more than that at one point, it was like 16 of them. So almost every course you'd have to take it. And then at first, it was you passed all to graduate from high school. They realized pretty quickly that was really challenging for, yeah, that was going to be interesting. So they went to a point system. Now, I believe you have to have X number of points, and do we know yet what the number of points is for the eight tests? And it's really six, right? Two of the maths you wouldn't take.
Or 18 total points, but.
18 total points?
It's kind of hard to figure out, yeah.
It's just not simple. So what's interesting about the system now is you have letter grades, which we all very intuitively understand, but the mathematics behind it is very complicated.
So let me go to another question, and are we changing how we prepare students because of those changes?
We're going to have to. It's, I mean, a lot of it's tied to Common Core, or Ohio's New Learning Standards, as they're called. Because the standards changed, they had to change the assessment metrics. But on top of it, they're changing the way they measure the measurements. So that's, it's really an interesting time in our profession and in our state and in education. Common Core and the Ohio's New Learning Standards have really raised the bar considerably, and so the assessments reflect that. We saw some of that this year with the assessments, and you can see our scores basically went down, except for 8th grade, we went down almost across the board. Not hugely, but certainly we did go down.
Madam President, I think the question that you're asking is, what are we doing on our end to prepare kids for? I would, I'm proud to say that Dr. Holden and her team are changing the landscape of how kids are being prepared, not just for the test, but for achieving period. So we put some rigorous pieces into place, just to make sure that we're going to exceed those standards. It really becomes very difficult for kids to measure up. If you start that in 2018, when the landscape really changes, it would be way too late. So we have to do our prep work right now, so that the kids in 2018, which is the freshman class, will be ready for that rigor.
So my next question, I'm not sure if it's for you, Mr. Denny, or you, Mr. Smith, but I think we're all not surprised, but disappointed naturally. So is there anything that we know for sure about what we do in the district that we need to do differently? Any systemic changes that you've identified? Any root cause issues that have been in the district that we need to?
That's interesting that you ask the questions. Every time we get to this point where we're actually meeting the standards, and that's why our goal is never to meet the standards, because you won't. The district changes the formula, they change the forecast. So it used to be 75%, now it's 80%. And when we were looking at the indicators, we noticed that, we were excited, because we thought we had met the 11th grade indicator for science at 80%, but the indicator is 85%. So it keeps going up, and the standards keep changing along the way. So you have a blend of Common Core, a blend of other rigorous standards, a blend of ACT. All these things are blended in, but they don't tell you that that's how your child is going to be assessed. They look at the test, they look at the assessment, and all of a sudden, it's there. And students are sometimes not prepared for it. So our work is very, very, I guess, very deliberate. We can't prepare for the normal thing, because normal doesn't exist. So if certain district starts hitting these standards, the state will change it again, so that it's becoming out of the reach for some districts to get there. so that it's becoming out of the reach for some districts to get there. Their socioeconomic conditions, and I know Mr. Cleary was sharing some information with me, the state's starting to recognize socioeconomic conditions play a really big part on assessment, but I don't think that they're willing to give every parent a job making $70,000 a year. So that's not the answer, and more state funding is not really the answer, it's how you change the socioeconomic landscape of students that are being prepared for 21st century learning.
So what's our answer in our district? How do we move forward, and granted that the bar is being raised, how do we begin to close those gaps?
Dr. Holden, you wanna mention something about some of our professional development work, and where we're really looking to change the landscape?
Sure. We just had our first professional development down Friday, so we're, we have some themes that run throughout the year, one of which is Sheltered Instruction, so it's PSYOP is the acronym, Dr. Johnson, but it's Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, it's really good instruction, typically you find it in an approach to teach English language learners. So both the staff of the ES and the IS were trained in, had their first training in PSYOP on Friday. We had a team from four buildings trained to, in the, train the trainer model for Formative Instructional Practices, or FIP, on Friday, the ES and IS will be trained soon because they were involved in PSYOP. And then other options for teachers revolved around project-based learning, and really, how do you differentiate instruction in the classroom when you might have a wide range of learners, kind of within that same setting? And then close reading and, close reading of text, which is pretty heavy in the Common Core, that will be up next.
So are these approaches new for our district?
No, PSYOP is not new, we are pushing it out to everyone, really with the exception of the high school, that is new. Project-based learning is not new, we are pushing that out to everyone. Differentiation, honestly, is not new, but it's something that really needs to be revisited all the time, so.
Okay.
So we're taking that approach and really looking at our resources, and saying, do our teachers who work very hard and are very talented and dedicated, do they have the right tools in hand to do what they need to do? You know, because they're, they're, like I said, dedicated and talented, but they're not miracle workers, and they, they need something tangible in their hands, so.
Dr. Holden, would you repeat something, I think you said toward the beginning of your remarks about, it sounded like the model that we use for English language learners is the model to, to continue to replicate and do more of, did I understand you right?
Correct, you, you did.
Okay.
PSYOP, Sheltered Instruction is a, is just good instruction for all students.
I think there's no questions, go ahead.
I, I just had one comment, maybe Mr. Smith, you could comment on it, there was a really good article in the Columbus Dispatch today, and I'm just gonna read very quickly, just a really short synopsis, maybe you could make, have a comment on this, we spoke a little bit before the meeting about it. Says, "There's another round of state report card data in Ohio shows a significant performance gap between low-income and wealthier districts. One key lawmaker says it's time for Ohio to get serious about addressing the crisis. No matter what measures used, performance index, proficiency scores, ACT scores, the latest results are clear, poverty rates continue to have a direct and negative link to Ohio's students, student achievement. There is just no way around it, we're going to need to invest more money, more money in different ways than we've been doing before, because what we've done in the past just is not working." A recent study found that on the Performance Index, a weighed average that measures how well students do on state tests, grades three to 10, districts scoring below 90 have an average of 83% poverty rate. Some of those things were, as you commented, we can't change that unless we can give out jobs, but what kind of things, are, are we doing things that are creative in that area that we create a new appetite for economically disadvantaged families, or?
If you look at, there's, there's going to be an additional report that comes out, and I know this is something that Mr. Penney cuff has been leading the charge with, and that's the community learning centers. Having the community learning centers where you have the wraparound services for students, regardless of their socioeconomic conditions, changes the variable. After that, then you change from the community learning centers, and then you make them professional learning communities, and that's where you meet the targets. It changes the landscape, it doesn't happen overnight, but with a steady flow of resources coming into the schools that students wouldn't have ordinarily, it makes them become closer to the mark than very disadvantaged like the article does specify. So that's why the, the community learning centers are, are critical.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Mr. Smith, superintendent's recommendations?
There is a resolution requesting alternative licensure, and Madam President, I'd like to read that resolution, if it's okay.
Please.
Whereas the superintendent has advised the board, there is an immediate need to seek an alternative teaching license for Deshonda Isom from the Ohio Department of Education for the position of intervention specialist. Whereas the board has been advised by the superintendent of Wynton Woods City Schools and Deshonda Isom has completed the requirements for the alternative intervention specialist license. Now therefore be resolved, Wynton Woods City Schools, District Board of Education, County of Hamilton, State of Ohio, that Section 1 pursuant to 3319.225 of the Ohio Revised Code, the board requests that the Ohio State Board of Education issue Deshonda Isom an Alternative Resident Educator Intervention Specialist Mild Moderate Educational Needs License in order for her to serve in the certificated position of intervention specialist. Section 2, the board instructs the Executive Director of Human Resources to take all steps necessary to convey the board's request, the Ohio Department of Education. In Section 3, it is found that all formal actions of the board concerning or relating to the adoption of this resolution be adopted in an open meeting of this board and all deliberations of the board, and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public or otherwise in compliance with legal requirements, including in Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code.
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Section 9.02 Personnel Schedules.
Yes, the recommendations to approve personnel schedules as presented, Section A, resignations and retirements, Section B, certificated employment, Schedule C, support staff, Schedule D, extra duty and supplemental employment, and finally Schedule E, which would be leaves.
Madam President, I'd like to break this into two motions. Madam President, I, I recommend Schedule A, Schedule B, Schedule D, and Schedule E.
Which one did you remove?
A, B, D, and E.
Staying from C.
You abstaining from C?
If I can do that upfront, yes.
So there's a motion for acceptance of Schedules A, B, D, and E, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. Mr. Seymour, will you call a vote on the motion?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
And now we need C.
Is there a motion for Schedule C?
Madam President, I move the approval of Schedule C as presented by the superintendent.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, been moved and seconded, Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Abstain.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Section 9.03 Proposal for Overnight Extended Student Trip.
Yes, Madam President, the recommendations to approve the proposal for the overnight extended student trip, Wynton Woods High School, school to Hexton, Germany, March 26th through April 3rd. For your review, there's also a proposal, if you look, you'll see the overnight extended student trips and the form that was used, giving information about what kind of activities the students would benefit from doing that cultural experience.
Thank you, is there a motion for an acceptance on the proposal for the overnight extended student trip to, I'm gonna mess this up, is it Hekheim?
Herkheim.
Germany?
I said it quickly, so you couldn't catch mine.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
9.05 is a proposal for an overnight extended trip to Shanghai, China?
No, Madam President, 9.04 is actually Little Rock.
I missed one, I skipped right over it, let's go to Little Rock.
To approve the proposal for overnight extended student trip, Wynton Woods High School, Academy of Global Studies, ninth grade, Little Rock in Perryville, Arkansas, March 21st to 25th, 21st to 24th, 2015, as presented.
Madam President, I move to approve the proposal 9.04 Overnight Extended Student Trip for the High School Academy of Global Studies, ninth grade, to Little Rock in Perryville, Arkansas.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
I found this one very interesting, that the students will learn about the challenges of hunger, poverty, and environmental degradation, that's, it's gonna be a very insightful trip. Now we'll move to 9.05, Proposal for a Overnight Extended Trip to Shanghai, China.
Yes, Madam President, to approve the proposal for overnight extended student trip, Wynton Woods High School, Shanghai, China, November 24, November 2014. We're still waiting for some confirmation dates, that's why you don't see a window in there, but it is, it is there.
So definitely in November?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam President, I move to approve 9.05 Proposal for the Overnight Extended Trip for the High School to Shanghai, China.
I'll second that.
Question?
Yes, Madam President, Mr. Smith, it just dawned on me, and I remember as this was being planned, there's a funding mechanism, the students are raising funds, have they, are they getting closer to meeting their, their goal? Is that why the date hasn't been set?
This is not the, if you're referring to the band trip, I don't know if you're referring to the band trip, this is a regular trip, this is the yearly trip, yes, sir. Very good. Good question.
Been seconded, Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
9.06 Proposal for Overnight Extended Student Trip to Washington DC for the 11th graders.
Yes, Madam President, to approve the proposal for overnight extended student trip, Wynton Woods High School, Academy of Global Studies, 11th grade, Washington DC, February 26th to March 1st, 2015, as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Madam President, if I could interject a quick comment, I'm thrilled that our teachers are planning these sort of mind-expanding experiences for our students, the foreign trips and trips that will feel foreign, although they're in the US, and of course, trips to other places, including the middle school gym.
That one may be very foreign, sir.
Yes, but I, I just, I'm thrilled that our teachers are going these extra miles, literally, and predicted the Shanghai trip is a long way to go for one week trip, but that's where our sister high school is.
Yes.
I think the other thing, it tells the, it gives the public an idea of what kind of experiences we want our students to have, not just here but abroad, so, bravo.
9.07 Proposal for Overnight Student Opportunity.
Yes, Madam President, the other trips I probably will not be attending, but this one I think I can put it on my schedule. So to approve the proposal for overnight student opportunity at Wynton Woods Middle School, October 10th and 11th, as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
9.08 Resolution National School Bus Safety Week.
Yes, even though there is a National School Bus Safety Week, I would just like to give special kudos to Mr. Denny, Ms. Wilson, and Ms. Hooper, for always making sure our students are safe and operating the bus as safely as possible, no matter what the weather conditions are. So the recommendation is to approve the resolution, National School Bus Safety Week, I would like to say that we operate in national school bus safety the whole year.
Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the resolution for National School Bus Week, October the 20th to the 24th, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
9.09 Schools Declared As Impractical to Provide Transportation During the 2014-15 School Year.
Yes, Madam President, I'm not sure if it's in 9.09 or 9.10, but you'll notice that you have stars next to certain schools, and those are high schools where we don't provide transportation, because we don't provide it for our own students. So the recommendation is to approve the list of schools declared as impractical, impractical, excuse me, to provide transportation during the 14-15 school year, as presented.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve 9.09 Schools Declared As Impractical to Provide Transportation, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye. And I have 9.10 as bus stops for the 2014-15 school year.
Yes, before I read that one, I would like to just let you know how collaborative we work to ensure that our kids get to school in a safe, in a safe manner. There is a correspondence from, to Mr. Denny from Mr. Hooper, to Mr. Denny from Ms. Hooper, and it says, "I'm recommending that the district provide transportation for these students, the boundary was formed when the school building housed K-6 students, and many students were walking to school with older siblings. There are a total of 40 students, five that are already providing transportation in this area, and another five were bused to daycares. My intention is to reroute buses coming to and from Primary North to keep costs down. Because of this, I anticipate seeing perhaps an additional 15 minutes max on some of these routes and none on the others. My best guess would be to say that it may cost 1.5 hours per day. I don't anticipate that all eligible riders will take advantage of this, additional fuel costs will be minimal." Basically, what's happened, Ms. Hooper along with Mr. Denny have collaborated together to provide additional routes for students who need it, but the cost is minimal based on how safe we want to operate our buses and also get our kids to school in a timely manner. It takes a lot of strategy to put those things into place. Years ago, I would just see buses traveling to and fro, but they mean something to me now. So thank you to the people who make the difference. So the recommendation is to approve the bus stops for 14-15 year as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation regarding bus stops.
Second.
Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penney cuff?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Board of Education reports 10.0. Board of Education reports, ten point oh one, the legislative report from Mr. Penneycutt.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Most of the legislators in Columbus are out campaigning for reelection, so there's really not much to tell you from the State House at the moment. I would say, take this time to say to people here and people listening that when you are approached by a candidate to be your senator or representative, ask that person their views on school funding. Ask that person their views on taking money that are, monies that are being raised to fund public schools and are being given over to for-profit schools with no supervision. Do your civic duty, ask those people, ask those candidates questions similar to those, and you'll be better served. And that would conclude my report and sermon.
Thank you, Mr. Penneycutt. Ten point oh two, Great Oaks Career Technical Center Report, Mr. Cleary?
Yes. In a region with low graduation rate and high unemployment, career technical centers such as Great Oaks Institute of Technology and Career Development provide a valuable service. The school offers thirty-nine programs with healthcare, with healthcare as a leading field of study among robotics. The school has recently, recently been awarded a one point four million dollar straight A fund grant from the state, which will be targeted towards building a manufacturing and pre-engineering lab. The grant was, was, in part, will be shared with other various career centers in Ohio as well. Great Oaks today is one of the largest career technical schools in the nation. I find it so interesting, I've been kind of doing what Mr. Smith has been doing. When I have a free hour or two, I go over and I've started to meet some of our students, and I'm impressed at how jazzed they are and how hardworking they are within their field. It's kind of exciting to see, you know, to see that. And as part of that, in my board packet, Cincinnati State Technical and Community College had a recognition program. It's called their Gateway to Success, and two of the Oaks students were involved with that, as well as Dr. Johnson. So, thank you. We had two students that recently graduated. And I don't know if I will be articulating this correctly, but they were able to earn their GED and continue their studies at Cincinnati State. The GED was the first step in continuing on with, with their career. Liliana Ramirez and Keela Smith, but thank you for attending that. I'm sure that they, they felt good that someone from their home district was there to support them. So, your job never ends. So, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Eleven point oh one, treasurer's compensation and contract review.
Madam President and Board, I moved to set the salary of the treasurer to a hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars annually and extend the contract to July the thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Second. It's been moved and seconded? Comments and questions?
I have one comment. The board has completed its annual assessment of Mr. Seymour and was very pleased with the treasurer's results and his working relationship with the board. The board is very pleased to have the services of such an accomplished, experienced, and ethical district treasurer.
Here, here.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. Well said for the entire board.
Thank you.
Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penneycutt?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Thank you.
And eleven point oh two, superintendent's compensation and contract review.
Madam President and Board, I moved to set the superintendent's salary to one hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars annually and extend the contract to July the thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Second. I think there was, yeah, okay.
You seconded, I'm sorry. Mrs. Miranda?
Comments?
The board is pleased with Mr. Smith's results from the past year and his working relationship with the board. Great strides were made in building personal relationships with stakeholders and educating the board on best practices and educational strategies.
Here, here.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penneycutt?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye. And might I add that there were some things that you tackled that weren't even on the horizon this time last year. We appreciate your diligence and hard work in those areas as well.
I'm a foolish man, ma'am president.
Okay, eleven point oh three, resolution adopting Board of Education Operating Protocol.
Madam President and Board, this is the resolution adopting Board of Education Operating Protocol. Whereas the Wenton Woods City School District Board of Education wishes to utilize effective operating strategies for teamwork among members of the Board of Education, and between the board and the superintendent, and between the board and the treasurer. And whereas the Wenton Woods City School District Board of Education has reviewed and discussed effective operating procedures between the board and the superintendent, and between the board and the treasurer, that would move the district forward in achieving its mission. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Wenton Woods City School District's Board of Education publicly commit themselves collectively and individually to following operating protocol, and this protocol shall be signed by all members of the Board of Education, as well as the superintendent and the treasurer on an annual basis at the Board of Education's organizational meeting held in January.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded? Questions or comments?
Mrs. Miranda, thank you so much for looking at our, looking at that document and, and helping us update that and not assuming that everything stays the same and static every year. It's a, it's a real working document for us, and thank you for, for taking that on.
Thank you for acknowledging.
Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mr. Penneycutt?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Are you gonna clap for all of yourselves? You've worked on this a long time.
Let's clap when we do everything. That's the first.
We got the document.
Or you clap when we do, when we do.
We got the document.
Mr. Seymour and I have been clapping.
Didn't they, Mr. Smith? They worked this hard on this.
A while.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a milestone. Twelve point oh one, comments from the members of the Board of Education and superintendent. We will start at the end. Dr. Johnson, anything?
For once, no comment.
No comment from me either, Madam President. Okay, Mr. Cleary?
Madam President, I was hoping that we could acknowledge tonight that we had a student videographer here. One of our high school students has volunteered with White Cross, but she just left. I don't think that she had anticipated that board meetings run that long. So, when we watch this, if she wasn't quite centered, I think this was her first time behind your camera. But I wanted to say thank you for the engagement of our, of our students, where they, they found things that possibly they want to consider as a career. I had a chance to chat with her, and she thought that, hey, that might be something I want to do, so, thanks for letting her apprentice with you this evening.
And maybe we shouldn't tell her that this is going to be one of our shorter meetings.
Right. Maybe not.
Mr. Smith, I wanted to suggest that come October for the, for the transportation proclamation that we have, that possibly a board member and yourself, or two board members go and visit the, it's, it's always an early morning because they start there early, but maybe to go down to the bus depot and thank the drivers in person for the, the hard work.
Absolutely.
The great safety record.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. No others?
One other comment. I've, I've been privileged to have this weekly meeting, and it makes my Fridays go. They are, they're great. Lunch with the superintendent where local businesses have stepped up to provide the delicacies that they serve, and students are giving us some incredible feedback. Seeing that our football team is in transition, maybe we could do lunch with the team, and that might kind of galvanize some of their spirit, so that we can get back in our winning ways. But for the board members who've had the pleasure of attending, thank you very much. The students really do appreciate it, and again, the feedback is something that we're gonna use to kind of leverage some other work down the road. So, thank you.
I, I want to commend you for that lunch. The, the conversation, the questions that you asked, the conversation with the, with the students, it was very enlightening, and I only wish that it had been twice as long because I think the conversations could have gone on all afternoon. They were very, very engaged, and, and I appreciate the invitation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here, I'm sorry, Mr. Penneycutt?
Just a, a quick comment, Madam President and Board. Continuing on, on the Bus Safety Week comment, in, in case I'm not among those who go whenever we go, please be sure to pass on that when I attend some event away from here at some other school district where there are buses from thirty or forty districts, say a music contest or something like that, and there are yellow buses all over the place, I can spot the Wenton Woods buses in that sea of yellow because they look better maintained. They just absolutely look, from, from a distance, I can say, before I can read the words on the site, I can say, that's one of ours.
Two mirrors.
So, appearance indicates attention to safety.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thirteen point oh one, is there anyone here from the Wenton Woods Teachers Association?
Come on down.
Step right up.
You know, some of these things, I wish, I wish I would have taken up your public comments offer. Now I feel like I'm preaching to the choir on, on some of these things here. First of all, Mr. Penneycutt, your last legislative report, you, I believe you brought up something about Common Core in the legislature, and if you could get back to me sometime on what the update on that became, of that movement to stop it.
At the moment, it appears not dead, but severely crippled. The governor has indicated that even if it makes it through the General Assembly, he is not in favor. Now, he's also running, so, you know, things may change, but at the moment,
Very good.
At the moment, it looks like it's not going to prevail.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, a few things here, you know, we're, as a WWTA, some positives that, some things we're very excited about moving forward, and that's with the building bond issue. We're excited that some of the things that board members and that, that have talked about with the gifted students and just students in general as far as, and with the socioeconomic gap, you know, one thing that would definitely help would be modern, twenty-first century classrooms. That could help out with the achievement gap, as we all know. I mean, you could see evidence with that for the AGS with what Dr. Holden started with the students and their laptops and some of the very high levels of achievement that has been going on there, you know. For example, one of my favorite statistics is our two-year average on the OGT is higher than our neighbor Fairfield and several of the other neighboring schools, including Oak Hills. And I could go on, but just, we want to get out of here. I have a feeling I don't want to list as long. Also,
That's important stuff.
And I sent, I believe most of board members and most of the administrative team my data analysis per the ODE statistics on that for the five tests and all. Something we're always looking for things to be proud of, and that's, that's definitely one of them. The, also, the number of teachers volunteering for canvassing, we're excited about that. The Mass Canvassing Blitzes that SEPSY's organizing, with one coming up this September, Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from, from ten AM to three PM. It's a chance to, for us to get out and talk about our district in a very positive way. We, third, I, I can't ever remember saying this in my twenty-one years about the treasurer, but that, the self-insurance piece that Randy got going was huge for creating financial stability to the district going forward, a point four percent insurance increase. I mean, that's, things like that make everyone happy, and it's just a very exciting move, especially go to Anthem, many people are looking forward to changing to that. And then, you know, working with Courtney on the new House Bill, three sixty-two MOU, so that we can get help where it is needed for administrators, helping teachers that, that need it. It should, by my estimates, and I will indulge someone in how I came to this calculation if they want, but it should free up over six hundred extra hours for administrators. Some of those, at least at the high school, it seems like we're seeing that in a lot more administrative presence in the hallway and all, I mean, it's, it's a real, I mean, this has been a real blessing to us this year, and I'm looking, looking forward to see what we can, what we can do with this extra time to help the kids and to help the teachers. Right, Madam President, you mentioned this, so I, I want to do my best to answer it from a teacher's perspective. And the, the thing when I'm speaking, I only have to really think about two groups, the students and the teachers. You have to put all the pieces together, the financial piece thrown into that, so, well, that's what we let you guys do. But, you know, some of the, you mentioned some things that may be stuck out for why we, why we're performing the way we are, obviously, this is, we've had meetings on this, and you have the Student Achievement Committee and, and several, Mr. Smith has really reached out to try and figure this, figure this out. But some things to highlight, just in case you weren't aware. Back when I started teaching in two thousand four here in this great district, we had a lack of textbooks at the sixth grade level, that's eleven years ago, and grades three through six, we still have that, and Dr. Holden is working on this, and, and I know, I know we're gonna come up with a great solution to this, and I look forward to, and the WWTA looks forward to working with the administrative team to come up with a solution to this. Right now, we're trying to work with the elementary school level to try and help them out with some of their lack of textbook needs, to formulate some solutions to that. I don't know if used books are, but once again, you guys are the experts on that. One thing I want to say is, I'm gonna mention these things, and I hope something that will differentiate me from some of my predecessors, is I'm always going to try and offer a solution. Yeah, but you may not agree with it, but I'm always gonna try and offer a solution. I don't want to just be known as someone that gives you problems to fix.
Appreciate that.
I would like to, and we as a WWTA would like to be part of helping to fix these things that we all came to together as a district. Second of all, we really had a great, a great idea with the second issue. That's something that's in the past, the three through six thing, and that's, you're asking why we're here today. A couple of things moving forward that could, I'm concerned could affect student performance going forward. We have, right now, we set out with the idea of having teachers at the high school teach six bells to lower class sizes. However, our enrollment is up, and we may see if that changes in early October. That's good news, and all in some ways for the high school. I don't know if it is overall for the district, but we have more kids in the physical, regular high school walking around right now, which have greatly increased our class sizes. And we have three and a half less teachers, one less math, one la, one less science, and one and a half less global language teachers. Now, being that half the performance indicators, almost half the performance indicators, and a large chunk of the state report card is relying on the high school, it's something that I'm concerned with, and that is teachers are concerned with going forward. That now, instead of what we had hoped with Dr. Holden's plan of having actually smaller class sizes with less teachers and higher enrollment, we actually have higher class sizes now for one of the critical buildings in our district. And then, something that, that we have right now with the subs, as far as that, that we're concerned that as we start to get into flu season and that we're concerned that as we start to get into flu season and along those lines, that if we don't bring back some sort of a permanent sub program, that we're going to be hurting our instruction. Teachers that don't get their prep on a regular basis, it's not happening yet, but teachers that don't get their prep on a regular basis have a hard time running off enough copies. It affects their classroom performance. The, and another thing monetarily, like I said, Randy's the guy with the money, but, you know, maybe someone could explain this to me. I know there's healthcare involved in with the permanent sub. I do realize that with the new Obama law. But a sub costs eighty-five dollars a day regularly. But if we're paying teachers twenty-seven dollars for eight bells, that's over two hundred dollars a day we're spending instead of the eighty-five. Like I said, you know, there's a healthcare piece to figure in there, but I, when Randy gets a chance, and I'm sure he will, maybe he could break down how, how that's, how that's cheaper. I know you guys have an idea, but we would, I would appreciate understanding that. And then, fourth and final, not too bad, almost got done in my five minutes. Fourth and final, you know, one thing that we're, final thing that we're concerned about is the amount of tests that we're having to undergo. And, you know, the students are the silent voice here, and I feel as teachers, we need to speak up for them every now and then. And just the amount of toxic testing going on with state mandated tests, anytime we can, as a district, choose not to go in that direction, the students and the teaching staff and the parents I've talked to of the district would greatly, greatly appreciate it. I mean, I'd be happy sometime when it, everyone's not trying to get out of here to tell you a story about all the tests that our students had at the end of the last, at the end of the year and fourth quarter in the high school, and go on from there. But it's, testing's great, any good teacher does it, any good teacher does it. But the amount that we're starting to move towards is, you can always do too much of a good thing. The guy that ran the first marathon, running's great, but didn't work so well for him. So, you guys know that story, right? Collapsed, okay. Yeah, I, I love running, but, yeah. So, our students love, love being pushed, but the, the last thing with that, it's not, our students are up to it, but every time we do that, we are missing out on instruction. We are looking for quality assessments, not quantity of assessments, because we want to teach as teachers. And as Dr. Holden said, the effort we put in, we appreciate that comment. By the way, thank you, Dr. Holden. We really want, we really want to be in the classroom and educating the students of Winton Woods. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Lemire.
And if you will notice, there were those of us who were feverishly taking notes, so your comments did not fall on deaf ears. Thank you. Is there anyone here from Oopsie? No? Fourteen point oh one, is there a need for an executive session?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not. Hearing none, all hearts and minds are clear, meeting adjourned.